I'd like to call the Mentor City Council Regular Meeting of Wednesday, July 5th, 2017, to order. I will be giving the invocation. Heavenly Father, we thank thee for this day. Help us through you's good judgment for the business at hand and guide us in wisdom with a continuing sense of truth and fairness for the community we represent.
[inaudible]
[inaudible]
Julie, please call the roll.
Mrs. Dowling?
Here.
Mr. Kirchner?
Here.
Mr. Krieger?
Here.
Mr. Landig?
Here.
Mr. Marn?
Here.
Mr. Blake?
Here.
Mr. Donovan?
Here.
Counselors in receipt of the minutes of the regular meeting of June 20th, 2017.
Move to approve.
Second.
Please call the roll.
Mrs. Dowling?
Yes.
Mr. Kirchner?
Yes.
Mr. Krieger?
Yes.
Mr. Landig?
Yes.
Mr. Marn?
Yes.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Mr. Donovan?
Yes.
Okay, we have a public hearing this evening, and this public hearing is being held pursuant to notice duly published and posted according to law. Julie, please read the legislation title.
An ordinance approving a road vacation of Kelly Drive and declaring an emergency.
Mr. Philippiak, would you like to give us a description of this item?
Yes, thank you, Madam President, members of council. And the vacation of Kelly Drive is part of an overall development plan which has been entertained and considered by the City of Mentor and its planning commission for a very long period of time, now better than a year. We are prepared to recommend to council that they consider this. I'll ask Mr. Traub to give us a general overview first.
Thank you, Mr. Philippiak, members of council. Once again, a planning process that requires some visual aids, so I'll step up and share those with you. Thank you.
From an aerial photograph standpoint, bird's eye view as it were, you see the Kelly Drive area highlighted at the top of the photograph in a crosshatch pattern. Kelly Drive historically had actually extended, had actually extended prior to the construction of State Route 2. When State Route 2 was constructed, it was cut off. But as you can see from the aerial photograph and know from your own experience, that roadway had continued to serve several businesses for that are part of 50 years or more. In any case, as a result of the proposed development plan, which has been, as Mr. Philippiak indicated, reviewed and approved by the planning commission, Kelly Drive is no longer required, and what has been set in motion has been the vacation of that roadway. So again, the aerial photograph depicting the current situation, and I would just share with you one additional drawing, and that would be of the vacation plat, which for members of council, of course, is included in your packet, and it simply depicts more formally and legally the actual area to be vacated. None of the businesses that are currently served by the roadway will continue to use that roadway. It'll be for the sole use of the Wisconsin development. If there are any questions, members of council, I think we'll entertain those later in the agenda, or if you choose to do that now. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Philippiak, is there anything else?
Nothing further at this time. Thank you.
Okay. Did the applicant choose to make any comments? No? Okay. Is there anyone wishing to speak in favor? Okay. Anyone wishing to speak in opposition? Okay, hearing none.
Jim?
Yes.
Oh, yes.
I'm not opposed to the project.
Did you want to come up, if you would come up and identify yourself, give us your name and address?
Steve Lark, 78, 48, 79, Bellflower Road. And my concerns are, and you didn't show it in your little psych plan here, excuse me, a little nervous. Bellflower Road is an access, and I was wondering if anybody's thought on how that traffic is going to come into this new development? Because Bellflower, sorry, Bellflower Road is a raceway right now, and Ray helped me a few years ago with the no trucks. But there's still trucks going up and down the road. I just thought, if anybody thought in advance on the traffic that's going to be generated on Bellflower Road. And actually, 615-
Just stick to the mic.
Oh, I'm sorry.
They might be having trouble doing you.
A little nervous, sorry.
That's okay.
I've watched you on TV so many times, I kind of like know you, but I don't. I kind of caught my breath. I just see Bellflower Road becoming more and more busy with people from the north end of Willoughby, the north end of Mentor, coming using that as a cut-through. Because Mentor has a lot of streets going north and south, but hardly any going east and west. And Bellflower is just a cut-through. I know there's a lot of homes in there, but there's a lot of traffic that's generated down Bellflower. And if you live down at the end of 306, you're not going to come all the way down to Tyler or the freeway. You're going to cut down Bellflower to get to this nice project. I know Giant Eagle and a fitness center and more restaurants. I mean, that's attractive. So how are people going to get there? And when you go down Bellflower Road, I know you got that nice little sign that tells the speed limit, but it collects no information. So you don't know if there's, I haven't seen a speeding, a car pulled over for speeding or a truck being pulled over for years. I mean, I'm not there all the time, but I'm just wondering how the traffic flow on Bellflower is going to be with the addition of this great facility you're building, but the traffic is going to generate also. Finally caught my breath. Anybody feeling me? I mean-
Ask him a question?
Yes.
Sir, it seems that what you're commenting to is the development in itself, the new proposed development.
What I'm questioning is the impact to my area of the new development. I'm not against the development.
Right, but what I'm saying is that that will be another piece of legislation later in the night when that development plan is actually considered by council. This is vacating what's known as Kelly Drive, which is just a cul-de-sac and cannot operate to take any traffic off of Bellflower. It merely serves the traffic that is located on Kelly Drive. And so my question to you was, did you want to come back later and comment about the development rather than commenting on the Kelly Drive vacation?
Well, I thought I would speak sooner than later, because once it's a done deal, it's done. And sure, I'll speak any topic that relieves Mentor, I'm sorry, Bellflower Road of traffic. Because like I say, it's a free-for-all there. It should be monitored more. Like I say, that nice sign that tells you your speed, some people, I think they just run it up to see how fast they can go. And without-
So in fact, you are speaking in opposition to the vacation of Kelly Drive?
Not necessarily. I think it's a nice project. I'm just worried about what's going to happen more to my street once it's there.
Okay.
And if someone doesn't bring it up now-
I just wanted to clarify what you were commenting-
And it hasn't been said, then I can't go to my councilman and say, I was there on July 5th, and we didn't really want to talk about it. We wanted to talk about the vacation, the vacation of the street, which is fine. I think it's a great project, you know, keep Mentor growing. But what's going to happen because of that project leading down my road, and like I say, it stopped at Route 2 on the other side of there is Bellflower, which is the main cut-through of this end of the city. And we've already got a lot of traffic going down that road. 25 posted. How much more traffic is there going to bring down that street after this mega-project is done? I mean, it takes over the whole corner. I mean, I don't want to be argumentative, I'm just trying to be, have foresight.
Thank you.
No, I think he just clarified why, you know.
Okay. All right, is there anyone else that wanted to speak in opposition? Okay, counsel's in receipt of all correspondence received pertaining to this matter. Hearing, no more comments, this public hearing is adjourned. Next, we have public hearing for ordinance number 17-0-63. Julie?
An ordinance amending Chapter 1171 of the Codified Ordinances of the City of Mentor 2006 as amended, the same relating to signs and declaring an emergency.
Mr. Philippiak?
Thank you, Madam President, and I will again momentarily turn this over to Mr. Traub. This is a code amendment that is being proposed by the administration. It is really based upon experiences that we have had related to the ability or desire, really, to try to accommodate new business developments as they relate to businesses that may sit quite a ways off of the main roadways. So for example, use Mentor Avenue or Route 306 as an example. Essentially, to put this in simplest terms, the further back from the roadway a business finds itself, there is a modest increase in the area of signage which they may be able to place upon the building or as a freestanding sign. Mr. Traub?
Thank you, Mr. Philippiak, Mr. Philippiak and members of council. The sign code really attempts to do two things. And again, certainly, as I've mentioned a number of times, several of you, we've worked together on the Planning Commission and as a part of the master planning, if you will, of some developments, perhaps have come to realize on your own parts that there are instances where developments are set so far back from the roadway, and yet they are held to the same standard as those that would be at a more conventional setback. And what the administration is attempting to do by this code amendment is to allow for allowances, modest allowances, both in terms of size, but also in terms of height at which that sign can be displayed. And in the fourth paragraph of the staff report, I basically attempt to summarize this, where a ground sign would be 15 square feet at a 100-foot setback, it could then be increased two feet for every 100 feet, up to 18 feet in, at a distance of 400 feet. So again, a very modest increase, if you will, very simply put, one foot for every 100 feet of distance from the right-of-way. So again, as you move further away from the edge of the right-of-way, both the height as well as the area of the sign could be increased. I've included in the staff report several examples, not so much that the planning commission, but that the Board of Zoning Appeals had dealt with, and I've cited those, Avery Dennison, CT Consultants, even the yet-to-be-constructed Cleveland Clinic with respect to their announcement signs, needed to go through the variance process because the current procedure didn't work. There are also other opportunities. There are still development opportunities within Newell Creek, additional potential opportunities along I-90, State Route 2, and also the Great Lakes Mall. Those are the areas that administratively we've looked at and see the potential areas. So this is not a whole-scale change that is going to dramatically change the size and the height of signage throughout the city. It's very limited to specific areas. If there are any questions, again, either now or during the discussion later on in the agenda, I'll try and answer your questions. Thank you.
Okay. Is there anyone wishing to speak in favor? Anyone wishing to speak in opposition? Okay. Counsel's in receipt of all correspondence received pertaining to this matter, and this public hearing is adjourned. New legislation, ordinance number 17-0-61.
An ordinance authorizing the city manager to execute a development agreement with VOH Mentor LLC to construct development improvements and declaring an emergency.
Mr. Philippiak?
Thank you, Madam President, and the administration has been working very closely with city council and as well with the Wisconsin Development Group in attempting to come up with a project that we think will be best suited for the community and to provide all the tools necessary and benefits necessary for this project to go forward. As council is aware, and this has of course been a long process to get to the point where we're, of course, the final development plan has already been approved for this project through the planning commission. The final step here is a development agreement with the City of Mentor, which would essentially lay out the terms by which the city would provide some level of assistance in order to allow this project to go forward. What we are proposing is a development agreement with the Wisconsin group that would involve 14 existing lots located, again, at the corner of Center Street and Tyler Boulevard. These lots essentially would be consolidated into a different development plan, which we anticipate at this point would likely result in approximately seven new developed lots. We are very pleased with the developer's vision for the area. We spent a lot of time, and I know council members have weighed in very heavily at different points of this process as well, in achieving some development standards at that location, which I believe that we're all happy with going forward. To allow the project to move forward, some improvements will need to be made to the public rights-of-way on Tyler Boulevard and Center Street. This is essentially the purpose of this agreement. We anticipate that enough new tax revenue will be generated with this development to allow the city to once again utilize tax increment financing to pay for certain improvements within the right-of-way. So what this agreement says is that the City of Mentor will move forward with those public improvements, which predominantly include the widening of Center Street and signalization at a new intersection, at the main entry point on Center Street, and a new traffic signal on Tyler Boulevard, including any associated utility relocation and other improvements, pavement markings, pavement improvements, drive approaches, the typical elements that include any one of our own public projects. This will be handled as a project, public project. We desire it to be handled that way. We generally speaking like to do our own work within the right-of-way. We think that it provides the least amount of disruption, and of course, we are more experienced with this type of work than would a private contractor working within our boundaries. So we believe we would recommend to council adoption of this agreement, and we're happy to answer any questions they might have.
Donovan?
I have a question. Mr. Philippiak, is there any possibility when this development starts to take shape that that, and I understand that Corner Restaurant is owned by the Wisconsin Group now, is there any chance of consolidating that driveway on 615, on Center Street into the development itself?
Well, I would say, Mr. Kirchner, at this point, we have had some discussions with them about it, and I think that there's some anticipation that in the future, some of the existing lots along Center Street that are not being absorbed through this redevelopment may in the future be developed, but they are not currently, other than the Corner Lot that you mentioned, those lots are currently not owned by the Wisconsin Group. So we would hope, it is always the administration, and I know council's desire as well as the planning commission, to consolidate as many entry points off of our major corridors in town, and we would strive to make that happen. Right now, there is no plan in place that would include that, and the development plan that's been approved by the planning commission does not include changing the current access point to that particular lot. But it's on our radar. We've had discussions with the developer, and I think that we would like to see that in the long run as well.
Thank you.
I would point out that currently, that use will not change, though, so until there's some change in business operations there or different planning comes forward, I think there'll just be business as usual with the same access.
Move to suspend.
Second.
Please call the roll.
Mrs. Dowling?
Yes.
Mr. Kirchner?
Yes.
Mr. Krieger?
Yes.
Mr. Marn?
Yes.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Mr. Donovan?
Yes.
Mr. Landig?
Yes.
Move to approve.
Second.
Please call the roll.
Mrs. Dowling?
Yes.
Mr. Kirchner?
Yes.
Mr. Krieger?
Yes.
Mr. Marn?
Yes.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Mr. Donovan?
Yes.
Mr. Landig?
Yes.
Ordinance number 17-0-61 has been approved. Ordinance number 17-0-62.
An ordinance approving a road vacation of Kelly Drive and declaring an emergency.
Mr. Philippiak?
Thank you, Madam President. I guess I would like to address one of the comments that was made during the public hearing with respect to Bellflower Road, or maybe the city engineer wants to chime in on this, but that was, Bellflower Road was not viewed as being significantly impacted enough to even be included in the traffic study. Bellflower Road traffic, certainly what exists today will, could perhaps increase, but we feel there's plenty of capacity on the road and any issues that could result, we believe we're in, we'll be in a position to manage once the development is going, and we can better understand those traffic patterns. But keep in mind, Center Street, and the reason this development is where it is, is that it has that immediate access off of Route 2 and Tyler Boulevard. So the two main access points and where we expect most of the traffic to be generated from this development will be those coming and going and exiting off of Route 2 and coming up Tyler Boulevard from a local level. You'll hear me report later tonight that we're making good progress on our Plaza Boulevard project, which council also understands will create another connector between Tyler Boulevard, and so create some better access into this area as well. So the changes that we anticipate there and the general traffic patterns that we anticipate probably won't impact Bellflower enough to really require any major capacity changes there. And frankly, we're somewhat limited to what we could do on Bellflower anyway, but we'll keep an eye on the speeds. I travel that roadway myself every day multiple times. It's certainly not anywhere near capacity, and I know the police department places a high priority on that in terms of traffic enforcement. So, Mr. Swigger, would you like to make any comments?
Yeah, just to try to bring some of the traffic numbers in the perspective, the Wisconsin development is expected to generate about 200, say 300 vehicles on a day, on an average day, whether it be in the peak hour, in the AM or PM. So about 2:40 in the morning, peak hour, about 3:40 in the PM. So if you just average about 300 vehicles, those vehicles will be split between Center Street from the south, Center Street from the north, Tyler Boulevard. Center and Tyler will see the most, I guess, the most impact from the development, obviously. Then you have Market Street, State Route 2. So Bellflower's included. So if you would consider about a 10% increase in traffic in the AM, you're only looking about, you know, possibly 30 vehicles. We see about 7,000 to 9,000 vehicles a day, I think around 7,000 vehicles a day on Bellflower. So as the manager mentioned, there's plenty of capacity, and this is expected to have a minimal impact on the increase in traffic on Bellflower.
Gentlemen?
Move to suspend.
Second.
Please call the roll.
Mrs. Dowling?
Yes.
Mr. Kirchner?
Yes.
Mr. Krieger?
Yes.
Mr. Marn?
Yes.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Mr. Donovan?
Yes.
Mr. Landig?
Yes.
Ordinance number 17-0-62 has been approved. Ordinance number 17-0-63.
An ordinance amending Chapter 1171 of the Codified Ordinances of the City of Mentor 2006 as amended, the same relating to signs and declaring an emergency.
Mr. Philippiak?
Nothing further, Madam President. Happy to answer any questions council may have.
Gentlemen?
Move to suspend.
Second.
Please call the roll.
Mrs. Dowling?
Yes.
Mr. Kirchner?
Yes.
Mr. Krieger?
Yes.
Mr. Marn?
Yes.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Mr. Donovan?
Yes.
Mr. Landig?
Yes.
Move to approve.
Second.
Please call the roll.
Mrs. Dowling?
Yes.
Mr. Kirchner?
Yes.
Mr. Krieger?
Yes.
Mr. Marn?
Yes.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Mr. Donovan?
Yes.
Mr. Landig?
Yes.
Ordinance number 17-0-64.
An ordinance approving and adopting the tax budget of the City of Mentor, Ohio, for the fiscal year commencing January 1, 2018, and submitting same to the county auditor and declaring an emergency.
Mr. Philippiak?
Thank you, council. Madam President, this is the first step in our budget process for next year. Mr. Malinowski, please.
Thank you, Mr. Philippiak. Members of council, you have before you the proposed tax budget for collection year 2018. It represents the exact same millage that's currently in place, including the estimated revenue that currently is received through our current fire levy, and the total collections are estimated at approximately 5.2 million that's generated from this. I recommend approval. Thank you.
Gentlemen?
Move to suspend.
Second.
Please call the roll.
Mrs. Dowling?
Yes.
Mr. Kirchner?
Yes.
Mr. Krieger?
Yes.
Mr. Marn?
Yes.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Mr. Donovan?
Yes.
Mr. Landig?
Yes.
Ordinance number 17-0-64 has been approved. Ordinance number 17-0-65.
An ordinance to authorize revisions to appropriations and declaring an emergency.
Mr. Philippiak?
Thank you, Madam President. Mr. Malinowski, please.
Thank you again, Mr. Philippiak. Members of council, you have before you several appropriation revisions that affect, I believe, three different funds. The largest items, as noted in the staff report, are comprised of additional telephone expenses on the legacy, both the legacy system and the reappropriation on the current five-year lease term for the new system. And also on the general fund side, the Brighton Road Project is formally appropriated in this legislation. And finally, the next largest item affects the TIF funding related to the portion of the Old Village District that we are funding through tax increment financing. I would recommend approval. Thank you.
Gentlemen?
Move to suspend.
Second.
Please call the roll.
Mrs. Dowling?
Yes.
Mr. Kirchner?
Yes.
Mr. Krieger?
Yes.
Mr. Marn?
Yes.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Mr. Donovan?
Yes.
Mr. Landig?
Yes.
Mr. Donovan?
Yes.
Mr. Landig?
Yes.
Ordinance number 17-0-65 has been approved. Ordinance number 17-0-66.
An ordinance determining to proceed with the improvement of streets hereinafter mentioned within the termini designated by supplying such streets with electric street lighting and declaring an emergency.
Mr. Philippiak?
Thank you, Madam President. And these next two ordinances are the next two procedural steps required for us to move forward with our annual street lighting assessment.
Gentlemen?
Move to suspend.
Second.
Please call the roll.
Mrs. Dowling?
Yes.
Mr. Kirchner?
Yes.
Mr. Krieger?
Yes.
Mr. Marn?
No.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Mr. Donovan?
Yes.
Mr. Landig?
Yes.
Ordinance number 17-0-66 has been approved. Ordinance number 17-0-67.
An ordinance to levy assessments for the improvements of various streets in the City of Mentor by supplying said streets with electric street lighting and declaring an emergency.
Move to suspend.
Second.
Please call the roll.
Mrs. Dowling?
Yes.
Mr. Kirchner?
Yes.
Mr. Krieger?
Yes.
Mr. Marn?
Yes.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Mr. Donovan?
Yes.
Mr. Landig?
Yes.
Ordinance number 17-0-67 has been approved. Ordinance number 17-0-68.
Yes.
Mr. Marn?
Yes.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Mr. Donovan?
Yes.
Mr. Landik?
Yes.
Ordinance number seventeen dash O dash sixty-seven has been approved. Ordinance number seventeen dash O dash sixty-eight.
An ordinance approving the final subdivision plot of 51 residential lots in the Lake Shore Highlands subdivision and declaring an emergency.
Thank you, Madam President, and happy to say that each of the last three years I've been able to report to Council that we've had over 100 new housing starts each of the last three years, and so our community's housing stock is growing and in great demand right now. Mr. Chau, would you like to talk a little bit about this development, please?
It would be my pleasure, Mr. Filippiak. Thank you. Mr. Filippiak and members of Council, once again, I'd like to share with you an aerial photograph with the subdivision superimposed. Take me just a moment. Again, Council certainly has this in its packet, but for folks in the audience provides good representation of this proposed development. As Council will recall, last year, an approval was made to rezone approximately 22 and a half acres from R4 Single Family Development to RVG Village Green. That development has now gone through the site plan approval process at the Municipal Planning Commission. The development will include 51 homes as it's presently conceived. It has provision for open space in excess of the amount prescribed in the ordinance. And I would say that what's intriguing about this development is the fact that we're not seeing little remainders of parcels that are utilized for the open space, but rather areas that will either constitute buffer or more meaningful, larger tracts of land for open space that will truly be an asset for the development instead of merely addressing the percentage requirement. There are also restrictive covenants that are in place for the development that have been reviewed and approved as a part of the administrative review, and the administration and Planning Commission are satisfied with those items. I think the one item that we're still talking about, a small design detail, as it were, is relative to mid-block pedestrian crossing that's recommended in the plan, and we're just administratively working through the desirability of making that provision. But in other respects, the Administration and Planning Commission are in approval of this development, and of course, I'm available for any questions. Thank you.
I'm curious, rarely have I seen an open space that is not contiguous to the land in subdivision number one, A is across the street from Blackbrook. So are there plans to use that, utilize it for growing vegetables or decorative plants? Or what's the thought there, Ron?
At this point, and the developers in the audience, as to the extent that, since you've raised the question if there's some very specific requirements, at this point, it was just proposed to be left in an open development, a community garden, you know, was certainly something that could be entertained as a part of the development.
Any other questions, gentlemen?
Move to suspend. Second.
Please call the roll.
Mrs. Dowling?
Yes.
Mr. Kirchner?
Yes.
Mr. Krieger?
Yes.
Mr. Marn?
Yes.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Mr. Donovan?
Yes.
Mr. Landik?
Yes.
Ordinance number seventeen dash O dash sixty-eight has been approved. Ordinance number seventeen dash O dash sixty-nine.
An ordinance authorizing the city manager to enter into a contract with Param Electric Inc. for the Old Village Lighting Project Phase One and declaring an emergency.
Thank you, Madam President. And Council will recall that you passed legislation earlier in the year that allowed us to purchase the actual lights and poles for this project. This would be the labor component for the installation of these 36 lights. Mr. Schwiker?
Thank you. Bids are open on June 16th for the Old Village Lighting Project Phase One. This project will consist of installing 36 decorative light poles along 615 between US 20 and State Route 84, and along US 20 between State Route 615 and Cattle Avenue. The style of the lights will be comparable to the ones on Civic Center Drive and will be full cutoff with LED fixtures. Two bids were received for this project, with the low bid being submitted by Param Electric Inc. with a price of $572,572. Param has successfully performed many projects for the city, and I recommend they be awarded this contract. Thank you.
Move to suspend.
Second.
Please call the roll.
Mrs. Dowling?
Yes.
Mr. Kirchner?
Yes.
Mr. Krieger?
Yes.
Mr. Marn?
Yes.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Mr. Donovan?
Yes.
Mr. Landik?
Yes.
Ordinance number seventeen dash O dash sixty-nine has been approved. Resolution number seventeen dash R dash 117.
A resolution declaring the amount of taxes which may be raised by levy within the 10-mil limitation to be insufficient and declaring it necessary for replacement 1.5-mil tax levy for a continuing period of time in excess of such limitations for the purpose of providing and maintaining fire apparatus, appliances, and buildings, and for the payment of salaries and expenses of permanent and part-time firefighters, and submitting such proposal to the electors of the city and declaring an emergency.
Thank you, Madam President. And we have had some opportunity to look at this in detail in Council Committee, sorry, Council Work Session earlier, and I know we've had a great deal of discussion about this. Essentially, the Administration is recommending that we place this issue on the ballot as a replacement for our fire levy. I'm going to ask the chief momentarily to discuss a little bit about how we use that money, because this money is predominantly used for equipment purchases. And as Council and the public is aware, as we grow in size and as we increase the number of active runs that our fire department responds to, it takes a heavy toll on the equipment over time. And in communities like ours, we believe very strongly in maintaining the highest quality edge that we can have by providing the best available technology to our firefighters and paramedics. When the, when our fire ordinance was originally adopted 30-plus years ago, it provided approximately one-third of the operating revenue for the fire department. Today, that has dropped to about 10%. We raise just over a million dollars a year with the fire levy, and this change in replacement will increase that by about a million dollars. So I'd like to turn that over. Now, how does that ratio improve, which is a question that we examined very closely in our Council Work Session? This would increase that ratio by about 10%. So we would add about another 10% of the overall funding to the fire department, still well short of the one-third that it used to provide in the past. But we do bill out for EMS transports. So together with the change in the replacement, we think that we'll be closer to achieving that one-third revenue stream that is supplemented then by two-thirds of our general fund operating revenue, which, as Council knows, is predominantly provided by our municipal income taxes. So Chief Searls, if you would speak a little bit to the issue of how we utilize this money to the public's benefit.
Thank you, Mr. Filippiak, members of Council. I want to start by thanking the community for their continued support. Without their support, we wouldn't be able to provide the exceptional service that I believe our residents deserve. And I also want to thank Council for making the time to schedule the work session that allowed us to outline our service delivery needs. As the manager mentioned, the levy is needed to offset the expenditures that we need to run the fire department. Due to the increasing service demands and the cost of apparatus, we feel that we have to do a replacement levy. The apparatus costs in the fire department have more than doubled since the levy was first passed in 1983. As an example, the cost of a fire engine has increased 216% since the levy inception, and we project several apparatus replacement needs over the next 10 years. That's not to mention buildings, wages, and other costs. The first new fire truck that we're planning to replace with levy funds is a 1993 Pierce. That truck has over 132,000 miles on. And then our focus is going to move towards replacing rescue squads, and we're replacing about one rescue squad a year. Our squads are very busy. It's not uncommon to have a 30-plus call day for our EMS providers. Our call volume, just to let you know, has increased from just over 2,900 calls when the levy was first passed to about 8,000 calls a year right now, and our call volume keeps going up. But within the next five years, we'll need to replace 12 fire department vehicles. That alone is estimated at $5 million. And as the manager mentioned, in 1983, the levy accounted for about 32% of our budget, and today, it's only about 10% of our budget. And I'm told by the finance director that the effective millage rate is now 0.69 mils. A replacement levy would bring our funding back up to about 20%, as the manager said, yielding just over $2.1 million. And that would go a long way to providing us the equipment and apparatus we need to preserve our community's ISO fire protection rating. But more importantly, it provides us the ability to continue to provide the residents with the public safety service that they deserve. As you know, this is a great city, and I appreciate all the support of our residents. And I also just want to take a minute to thank Betsy Scott and Glenn Miller for accurately reporting the facts regarding the fire levy and their recent coverage so that the citizens can make an informed decision. I feel that this levy is needed. I thank you very much for your time and support. I'd be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Gentlemen?
Move to suspend. Second.
Please call the roll.
Mrs. Dowling?
Yes.
Mr. Kirchner?
Yes.
Mr. Krieger?
Yes.
Mr. Marn?
Yes.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Mr. Donovan?
Yes.
Mr. Landik?
Yes.
Resolution number seventeen dash R dash 117 has been adopted. Second readings, we have none. Third reading. Ordinance number seventeen dash O dash 56.
An ordinance authorizing the execution and delivery of a Mentor incentive grant with Alloy Bellows Corporation and declaring an emergency.
Thank you, Madam President, and we will ask Council to move forward with this this evening. We have had some discussion. But, Mr. Chau, if you would mind refreshing our memory on the terms of this agreement.
Thank you, Mr. Filippiak, members of Council. The report initially presented to you for the meeting of May 24th outlined the fact that, first of all, a Mentor incentive grant was entered into with Alloy Bellows and Star Precision Products, a company that had already been located in the city, which was subsequently purchased by Alloy Bellows. And to this day, Alloy Bellows continues to make investment in that facility, both in terms of machinery and equipment and initial jobs. And in fact, that initial job creation at Star is why, if you take a look at the financial statement for Alloy Bellows' current corporate facility in Highland Heights, why you see a slight decline in employment, that's because those jobs have been transferred to the City of Mentor. In any case, two years ago, when we were exploring the relocation of Alloy Bellows' corporate facility, the preliminary planning had revolved around relocating the entire facility to the Star Precision campus. That has not been, has not worked out, and they have chosen to build a second facility in the industrial park behind the Caterpillar Plant, referred to as the Mentor Business Park. So they'll be constructing a new facility of approximately 52,000 square feet on a 10-acre site and bringing with them 70-plus jobs from their current Highland Heights facility. Based on the guidelines that Council has adopted relative to the MIG requirements, they would be entitled to a 10-year, 50% grant on their payroll. Are there any questions, members of Council?
Mr. Chau, I have a question. It's been a while since we initially discussed. If you could refresh my memory, what will be happening with Star Precision?
Oh, Star Precision will be staying here.
They will be staying in that facility?
Yes, yes, and continuing to grow. I would just add, as a footnote, that there actually had been another company that had occupied some of that space when it was independently owned, and that company has been forced to relocate as a result of that. But as Council is well aware, being the diligent director I am, I was in contact with them and attempted to find them suitable accommodations within the City of Mentor.
Wonderful, thank you. Gentlemen?
Move to suspend. Second.
Please call the roll.
Mrs. Dowling?
Yes.
Mr. Kirchner?
Yes.
Mr. Krieger?
Yes.
Mr. Marn?
Yes.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Mr. Donovan?
Yes.
Mr. Landik?
Yes.
Ordinance number seventeen dash O dash 56 has been approved. Managers report.
Thank you, Madam President, members of Council. I think it's safe to say that we had a very successful grand opening yesterday of our Mentor's Civic Amphitheater. We had a fantastic turnout by the public, and our comments back and feedback has been overwhelmingly positive. We had fantastic band, Soul Asylum performed well, lots of positive comments there, and the facility showcased itself well. So again, the Administration thanks Council for its strong support of helping us get that project off the ground in a very short time period. I want to remind everyone in the public that it was just the opening of our summer concert series next Tuesday at 7:00. Mr. Speed will be out there. They've played here in the past, and they generally draw a large crowd. The fireworks were fantastic as well yesterday. The weather cooperated perfectly. And I'm really most glad to be able to tell you that throughout the course of the entire Independence Day celebration, through the concert and the fireworks, we really had no incidents of any note whatsoever reported by either the police or the fire departments. We were able to clear traffic out of the area in just under an hour, and the fire department as well did not receive any calls for service that were fireworks-related to injuries anywhere within the city yesterday. So couldn't have been a better day overall. I think we were very, all blessed to be there and be a part of it. And we, most importantly, we thank the public for their support and for coming out and showing their civic pride yesterday. It was really overwhelming for all of us. So looking forward to many, many more summers like that to come. Just a reminder that the Tuesday through Friday waste collection routes will be delayed by one day this week due to the observance of the Fourth of July holiday. Happy to say that all lanes are currently open to traffic at Garfield Park and Lucretia Court at Mentor Avenue. The changes to the traffic signal there are the last bit to that project. While we wait for that equipment to come in, we'll be, that signal will provide a protected left going into the park and at Lucretia. That work should be completed by August 14th. Great Lakes Crushing began saw cutting the pavement on Midland Road this week, and in the areas where the storms will be replaced, and that scheduled completion date is September 29th. Our contractor has started dewatering the Garfield Park Pond. A ditch on the north side of the pond is allowing the water to drain out slowly to a lower level than the concrete spillway, and we expect that that dewatering period will allow us to begin dredging operations by early, probably the first or second week of September. Scheduled completion date for that dredging work is October 31st. I know we've received some very good input from the public about maintaining some, a safe protection around that area as it dewaters, because that mud can be very mucky and dangerous, especially for small children. The Cindy Engineer is working with the contractor to get some fencing put in place by the end of this week. City is currently requesting quotes to improve a drainage ditch between Krieger Park and Sherwood Drive. Once completed, that drainage from Krieger Park will be routed back I know we've received some very good input from the public about maintaining some, a safe protection around that area as it dewaters, because that mud can be very mucky and dangerous, especially for small children. The city engineer is working with the contractor to get some fencing put in place by the end of this week. City is currently requesting quotes to improve a drainage ditch between Krieger Park and Sherwood Drive. Once completed, that drainage from Krieger Park will be routed back into the retention area on the west side of the park, as was originally intended. I know this is a project we've been working closely with you, Councilman Blake, on over the past six months or so, and that, we expect that that will move forward, be bid this month, and probably completed by the end of the month. So we think that that will dramatically improve the conditions in that area. Plaza Boulevard Extension Project is nearing completion. Conduit construction under the railroad tracks is complete. Storm sewer construction is complete, and the embankment construction between the railroad tracks is complete. That leaves roadway pavement to be installed by late July, and then just the signal placement, correct?
Correct.
So keeping our fingers crossed, hopefully by the time council comes back into session, we'll be very close to having that roadway opened up. And finally, this evening, I'm very happy to announce two new businesses to our community. Simply Therapeutic Massage and Wellness Center at 7541 Mentor Avenue, and Lifeway Christian Store at 7633 Mentor Avenue, and we wish them great success, and we appreciate their investment in our community. That's it.
Are we planning a grand ribbon cutting for the Plaza Boulevard?
Should have a band out for that, right?
Can we have fireworks again? That's a good idea, Scott.
We'll come up with something.
Sounds good.
Mrs. President?
Yes.
I was asked last night, I guess a two-parter. One, where are we at in this year's sidewalk replacement program? And number two, how does a resident know whether or not it's a city-planted tree versus a non-city-planted tree? What's the process?
Well, let me take the, well, I'll tell you what. Mr. Swiger, do you want to answer the sidewalk question? Because we're coming off of some completion of most of the work this year.
Sure. We are, our contractors are just finishing up the replacement from last year's program. We're currently inspecting this year's program, which is Zone 3C. We're currently inspecting sidewalks on Churchill Square, Truman, Harding, Taft, Grant, Hayes, McKinley, Jasani, Fillmore, Buchanan, Adams, Kennedy, Coolidge. We're just finishing up inspection in that area, but that's the area we're focusing this year, north of State Route 2, west of Independence Place condominium, south of Bellflower. So, yeah. So we are finishing the work from last year that residents did not do themselves down in the southwestern quadrant of the city, near State Route 306 and Midland. So that work is finishing up, but we're currently in the process of inspecting the new zone right now, 2C.
So our work on 306 that was causing the closure of the one lane last week finished up on Friday. We took a look at that and was able, out there myself just last week, and the work along Midland and 306 came out very nicely. That's, so the work from last year is predominantly done. After inspection, residents will have the opportunity to conduct the work on their own or with private contractors. So our next, so it will be next spring before we're bidding out this year's phase for what doesn't get done by the contractors. And Mr. Swiker, could you speak to the tree issue, please?
There's two programs through which a street tree would be planted. One's been going on for many years is with new subdivisions, the developer deposits money with the city, and then once the subdivision is fully built or mostly fully built, the city hires a contractor to plant the trees. The other program is one that you probably remember just started last year, where we started offering trees to certain areas largely in response to the impact of the Emerald Ashmore. In both cases, I mean, these are trees that are going in the tree lawn. There's typically a one-year warranty for the tree, but after that, per the code, the tree belongs to the homeowner and is their responsibility. As far as historically, give or take 10 years that I've been involved in this, I mean, we've been keeping records prior to that. I couldn't really guarantee you we could find out, but, you know, if it's a relatively new subdivision, then certainly it would have been planted under a contract with the city.
I think it's fair to say that whether or not it can be distinguished between a tree that the city planted versus what a private homeowner planted, if it's in the right-of-way, it's still subject to all the rules that govern that. So can't cut it down without approval and without good reason. Has to be maintained in all respects by the property owner. We get those calls pretty regularly about, well, we've got the street tree, what's the city going to do about this? And typically, most of our residents understand that they are responsible for those trees in the right-of-way, but that as a community, our urban forest is something that we try to pay close attention to maintaining over time.
Okay, thank you.
Which is a very timely question tied in with your sidewalk question, because as we've all agreed going forward, the city actually invests largely in each phase of our sidewalk program as it relates to the street trees, and the primary purpose of that is to ensure that when that contracted work is performed, the city will pay for those particular slabs to ensure the preservation of those street trees.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Donovan?
I'd just like to thank Chief Searls and Chief Knight for what a wonderful job those guys did and how professional these guys were. It was unbelievable. You know, you said there's no incidents or no problems or anything. These guys looked so professional yesterday, and they had this thing running, like a well-oiled machine, and Andy Rose and Ken Kaminsky, these guys were unbelievable, and the calls we're getting about the opening of the amphitheater was just, that brought everything to a whole new level here, and it was just, I just want to tell everybody, that was fantastic, and congratulations.
Thank you, Councilman. Commander President, if I could just chime in on that, because I'm certainly remiss in not saying that first. You know, I couldn't be any more proud of the staff, the administrative staff. I mean, our Parks Interactor to really everyone, Mr. Kaminsky, Ante LaGarsik, Andy Rose, Tony, Engineering Department, they're really even economically developed. There was really no department that hasn't in some way had a, some part in, played in bringing that project to fruition and putting the event together. And what a great day to celebrate Independence Day. And, you know, I know our staff is tired right now, and it was a, it was a long weekend. But, you know, they could be, we're proud of them. They can be very proud of themselves, and I think, you know, the effort was paid off yesterday.
We are also, and...
Just one more thing on another subject. The Garfield Park Lucretia Drive Churning Lane is fabulous. Cars are flowing right through, and, oh, it's really working well. It was a great project.
Thank you.
Yeah, just kind of piggybacking on Mr. Donovan's comments. Yesterday, as we all knew and heard from Mr. Donovan, his 94-year-old mother?
95.
95, I'm sorry. I don't want to begrudge her one year. And she sat through the entire Soul Asylum, and then we also had a pretty touching moment where we had a very young man up on the stage with his guitar playing. I saw Councilman Kirchner got a very nice picture of one of our officers with a young man that walked up and asked him, and he took out and gave him, walked up and asked and gave him a badge, and I know Ray got a really nice picture. I'm looking forward to seeing that. So it was just kind of something that all age levels were involved, and it was just really exciting. It really was.
And we're, of course, very honored to have Representative Joyce come out and join us for the celebration.
Yes, definitely.
And Commissioner Troy.
And Commissioner Troy.
Yes.
And Representative Young.
Yeah.
Okay, we're done with the manager's report. Clerk's correspondence.
Council is in receipt of the Mentor Municipal Court month-end report, May of 2017.
Commission committee reports, we have none. All business. New business?
Madam President?
Mr. Blake?
I'm happy to report more good news after the, not as big as the amphitheater opening, but I'd like to thank Mentor Ridge Farms for a donation of 1 and 1/4 acres to the City of Mentor. This is property right on Perkins that's adjacent to Wildwood, and the property will remain in its natural state and be adjoining to Wildwood. And I want to thank them because the homeowners association is such a pleasure to work with. And I also want to thank Richard Henning for ironing out the nuts and bolts of the whole thing and getting it transferred over to us, but, you know, it's great. Parkland and the City of Mentor just grew by an acre and a quarter, so thank you very much to them.
Thanks, sir. Any other new business? Okay, persons before council. We have two people this evening. The first is Tim DeWolf. Please come forward and state your name and address for the clerk.
Thanks for having me. Tim DeWolf, D-E-W-O-L-F, 7456 Sherwood, Mentor, Ohio.
Thank you.
And you heard about the drainage project at Sherwood behind Kruger. I believe I'm the instigator of that project. It has been my contention for several years, the development of Kruger Park into a soccer field has caused drainage problems. I've lived on Sherwood for 23 years. There are two issues. One, on the east side of Sherwood, the drainage flowing from the soccer field area into the woods behind has destroyed the once-natural hardwood and turned it into a, I guess it's a wetlands now. The second is that the drainage installed by the city comes across the cul-de-sac to a catch basin in my front yard. This goes across kind of on a northwest tangent between my house at 7456 and 7452 to an open culvert. I have been told alternatively by the city, there is an easement and there isn't an easement. It's my contention that if the city collects water and puts water in a city pipe and runs it through a city catch basin and then dumps it into an uncontrolled swale at the rear of my property, it's the city's responsibility, not mine. I'm currently looking at a $5,000 to $10,000 preventive maintenance and restoration project in my backyard. My back patio is sinking. The footer tiles have been blown out by the hydrostatic pressure. Hundreds of thousands of gallons of water come through my area. I actually keep tubes, bags of tube sand to barricade my walkout basement so that when the water rises, I don't get inches of water in my basement. Councilman Blake has been very attentive. As far as I know, I'm the only one that's ever walked this area during flooding conditions. I have video. The city engineer and I have spoken. They came out last year and did a project. I had a couple of sewer project people come out and look at it, and they thought that the work done last year by the city was incomplete. Currently, the 12-inch pipe that crosses my property and dumps into that unconventional swale is half-black by dirt. The city engineer is a good team player. He's not on my team, but he's a good team player. He has a project in mind. My suggested answer to this would be to take that existing catch basin and run a line to what he is projecting as a drainage project to carry it into the retention basin. I've lived there since 1983. I maintained a path through that woods before there was soccer fields so that children could walk to Hopkins Elementary. That is now impassable because of the new wetlands that has grown up there. I don't know if any of you would welcome wetlands next to your house for your property values, but I certainly don't. I don't encourage a development of soccer fields that caused the creation of wetlands, mosquitoes. It just goes on and on. Anyway, I spoke with the engineer. He told me there's a plan. I'm not sure that I approve that it's going to actually solve my problem. Both contractors have told me that as long as the water comes from that catch basin and empties into that swale at the rear of our property, that the repairs would be temporary, that eventually they'd have to be redone. So I thank you for your attention, for your time. Chief of Police, your guys had to search my shed three times to find the gun from the guy that robbed the guys in Willoughby. So they're great at fireworks, but they could, they want to come practice on my shed, they can.
Thank you.
Mr. Philippiac, did you want to comment?
Sure. Boy, it's not every night that someone can come to council and realize that we just talked about a capital improvement that will impact them positively. So as Mr. DeWolf, I think one of the, what we learned through this process, and I know that Councilman Blake has been working very closely with the administration and the city engineer, and we've studied this area very closely. In fact, again, timing is everything. There are wetlands that exist to the north of the city's Krieger Park, and we were, we just recently got word literally today about the report of the wetland delineation there. So we believe that we will be able to actually restore a ditch line that was originally intended to be constructed, or I should say extended, that leads directly into the city's retention area just north of Krieger Park. And we believe that this will capture a great deal of water that probably is, very fairly, as Mr. Wolf stated, migrating toward Sherwood Drive. We're also going to be picking up the flow from a ditch that runs from the east that will, should dramatically reduce the water that flows through the pipe that he made reference to. City engineer and I spoke earlier today, and just to kind of review what we see here, most of the infrastructure that he refers to that runs from Sherwood Drive and then runs to the west and up toward Hopkins Road is actually installed in the township days before the city was a city. We don't have easements. Looking at the Platts, the city does not have an easement, or I should say, the township did not have an easement over that. But moving forward, I think it's fair to say that the city always looks to find ways to work with the property owners as it relates to flow that's taken from public spaces. So in this case, Sherwood Drive and Krieger Park. So I think we're pretty confident that given the elevations out there, we'll be able to capture anything that flows off of Krieger Park, and with any luck, we may even be able to pick up most of what flows south on Sherwood Drive. We're going to be looking into that as well. So we'll see what those improvements do to improve the situation. If they, if we see some areas downstream of Mr. DeWolf's property that are still, have some storm-related issues, we might look at doing some ditch re-lining out there as well. But we think that this will solve most of the problem there.
I appreciate it. I know we normally typically don't get into a back-and-forth discussion on these things, but I knew you were very well-prepared this evening.
No, well, it's, timing is perfect, because as I was planning on reporting, and as I did report in the manager's report, we're ready to go. We've been working, we've been taking bids and just waiting in anticipation of that wetland review, which arrived today. So we've been taking quotes. We estimate that the project will probably, the ditch realignment will probably be about $28,000, and we'll get started on that relatively soon, and there's a good chance that that work could be completed yet by the end of the month, or early August at the latest. So we'll see how that goes.
Madam President?
Yes, Mr. Blake.
If I could just add one thing. Mr. DeWolf, once this is done, I'll be more than happy to come out whenever we have a heavier rain and go over the water movement with you. And kind of, I'm not an engineer, but we could kind of analyze whether this is working or not. I'd be more than happy to do.
You were in a meeting with me and the city engineer in the original meeting?
Yes.
And at that time, I was told there was an easement and that it was attached to my deed.
Uh huh.
So if that's so, I will try and get you to. There's only one person in this room that's, for 32 years, walked those fields, and he's never been consulted on what these plans are. I'm that person.
Thank you. Next, we have Mark O'Bannon. Please come forward. State your name and address for the clerk, please.
My name is Mark O'Bannon. I'm at 5430 Langs Road. I'm here to discuss three topics today. First topic is waste management. Me and my sister, we moved in here, okay, have had a lot of issues with waste management. One week, they didn't pick up half of our recyclables. Another week, they didn't pick up our garbage. We threw a couch out, okay, they didn't pick it up. They told us we had to bubble wrap it, so we had to get a friend out and bubble wrap it, and a couple other issues, especially lately with the yard waste. I contacted a Bonnie at the city, okay? She tells me, okay, that if there's any problems with waste management, you don't call the customer service. customer service representative. You need to talk to her. So, I talked to her, okay, and she got my issue resolved real quickly. I wanted to publicly thank Bonnie, okay, for helping me and with the situation with the waste management. But the thing is, okay, is no one told me or my sister, okay, that, okay, if there's any problems with waste management, you don't call the customer service number that's on the bill. It's you got to call the city and call her. And I think the next time you publish your brochure, that you need to say, if there's any problems with waste management, don't call the customer service representative on the bill, call Bonnie at the city and she will solve your problems for you. Okay, so that's on waste management. We've had a lot of issues with yard waste because I've cleaned, did some trimming of trees and stuff like that and they wouldn't take it. And a couple of the people on my street with waste, with yard waste have had a problem and then Bonnie told me, okay, that they've had a lot of issues with the yard waste for the last four weeks. Would that be correct? Could anybody, could the city manager?
Mr. Schweiger? Anything else? I know the waste management indicated us probably a month ago that they had an unexpected amount of turnover and for a few weeks in a row, they did seem to have some problems with the yard waste. I would say based on the calls we're getting, I think they've gotten it pretty well ironed out. They've staffed it up. They've brought in extra supervisors. Not, you know, they're picking up thousands of homes a day. I won't say, you know, there might not be one or two misses a day somewhere, but all in all, they seem to be certainly moving in the right direction.
Okay. Now, the other thing is CEI. Since we moved out here in November of 2013, we've had a lot of electrical issues with the power going out, with tripping, okay, especially from the relay station over on Twinbrook. Also, every time it trips, okay, it damages our cable equipment. We've had to replace dishwasher, okay, because it messed up our electrical system. It almost ruined our washer because our washer's cabrio with a lot of electronic stuff on it. And I talked to a couple of linemen, okay, the lineman says that there's a lot of issues in the shand- in the chandel area that the undergrounds are blowing. And because their undergrounds are blowing, it's tripping the whole thing here, okay, and it's causing our power to go out. And what they say it's tripping is, is it goes out for a minute or two and then it comes back on, okay? But if you're doing something, let's say you're watching something, okay, or you're doing laundry, or you're doing dishes, when it trips, okay, it messes up the electronic because the last time the thing, the electricity tripped, okay, we had to call our cable company out and they had to replace our modem and they had to replace the cable box because the power issues, the things keep tripping. Okay, so I wanted to inform you, okay, that you need to talk to CEI, okay, about the situation because we just can't keep replacing cable boxes, dishwashers and electrical things because power keeps tripping because there's a problem with the undergrounds on the south side of Lakeshore over by where I live, by the Blackwood Golf Course. So, I don't know who you talk to at CEI, okay? Need to talk to them about it because since I've been out, I've never had that issue when I lived in Cleveland. Okay, I never had anything trip, okay? In Cleveland, the power went out, but it never, nothing ever tripped at my house. In Cleveland, I lived there 50 years. You know, I've came out here and electrical service is a lot worse out here than it was in the city of Cleveland. And then my third issue is about the golf course. Again, the tractors are out before seven o'clock, especially on the weekends, and I especially love being woken up on July 4th at 5:45 by the tractors, okay? And it's like, I'm just, I will be here every city council meeting arguing that the tractor should not be at my house before seven o'clock, okay? I invite my councilmen to come out. I invite the city manager to come out because I ain't going to invite Kaminsky because Kaminsky ain't going to come out. Ain't going to do nothing for me. So, I like to invite you, Mr. City Manager, to come out to my property, okay? And just see, also, I like to invite you, Mr. Manager, to come out and all this grass thing, okay, that you guys put up in the golf course, okay, you got a lot.
Mr. O'Bannon, your time's up, so if you could wind down.
I'll wind down. I would like to invite John Kruger. I would like to invite the city managers to come out to my property anytime you want because if you look from my property, three houses down this way, three houses down going toward Lakeshore, has hardly any grass at all. Now, the regular grass is growing and stuff like that, but I like to, you to come out because there's a lot in the clumping over there, about four properties down, there's a lot of grass there and there's around the bend going toward Lakeshore, there's a lot of grass there, but it's eight, there's like six, eight properties, there's no grass. And I also want to inform Mr. Philbeck, tell Mr. Kaminsky to have his people come out.
Mr. O'Bannon, your time, your time's up.
So, I want to tell, I just want to tell Mr. Kaminsky that to come out because the golfers ran over the string that's protecting the grass, okay, and for them to have those people come out.
Mr. O'Bannon, your time's up.
Okay. I just want to let you know.
Thank you.
Madam President?
Yes, Mr. Pregrau.
I want to say a few words because after the last meeting, of course, some of these that Mr. O'Bannon is stating now are new ones, but as far as the golf course, I mean, it was nice after the meeting that his sister thanked us for the actions we have taken as far as realigning the tee box, putting some trees in, the fescue grasses he's talking about and we have signs there. We're not going to be able to keep somebody on the golf course all the time. I asked Mr. O'Bannon, I don't know if you've done this, I said, you know, this is an industry standard and I said, why don't you check with other golf courses in Lake County, Geogee or Cuyahoga, that this is the time these mowers go out because the tee times typically start at about 6:00 AM in the morning. I'll look into the CEI. Have you checked on your power issue, your grounds on your electric?
Oh, I've had everything replaced. I've had, I've had my meter replaced.
Because I'm just saying that because I've had complaints from other areas within the ward where a whole neighborhood goes up or a few houses have had a tripping problem, but haven't anything down on links. Have any of your neighbors had this problem?
Yep. They've had the same problems up the whole street from all the way down to, all the way to some of the...
I'll check with CEI on that. On the mowing, as I mentioned before, we've been through this a number of times and you are welcome to show up at every meeting, but that issue is not going to be resolved to your pleasure. I understand that.
Okay. I'm just, you know, you know, you have your thing and I'll take appropriate actions.
Okay.
So, you know, but like the CEI, okay, we, I've had, I've had my meter replaced.
I'll contact, I'll contact CEI.
I've had my meter replaced. I've had them come out like four or five times to replace the connections on the pole.
Mr. O'Bannon, your time, your time is up.
So, I'm just letting you know that that's a problem.
Thank you.
Who did your soccer?